Apply to the intentions of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the sentence one on the issue under that in the this law will be liberated to justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody for what is it November 10, 2025. Okay. Are there any changes? Does anybody want to approve the agenda? Make motion.
I move for the approval of the agenda as submitted.
You'll take a second.
Oh, second.
Looks at the seconded, okay. Now we go to approval of the consent agenda.
Nope, the agenda, not the consent.
What's that?
Oh, we need to vote.
Okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, see and none, motion carried. Okay, approval of the concern agenda.
I move for the approval of this consent agenda as submitted.
May I go a second?
The electric bills for the. People.
Yes, it's in the update. So there is an updated list that you have with I think three additional bills I didn't have him. We didn't have that one until today. So that included a bill for the refill here for the diesel fuel. We'll be P E and a trial out what these bills were added.
Wait, unless.
Yeah, it's gonna be at the very end of it. It's gonna be, because there's a second. If it's thirty nine dollars.
So do I get a second?
A second.
Okay, from secondment, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, see and none, moving along. Public comment, anybody here want to do public comment? See and none, we'll go right to directly to reports with the treasury board, Annette. Hey.
I started bringing tax bills in. They seem really high this year.
Oh, thank you.
Even though we didn't add anything to it, it just seems like they're.
Anybody have any questions for Annette? See and none, we'll move along to zoning administrator Mariano.
Not, not much different in the last couple of months. We are about just a little bit familiar with what we were last year and as we hope to be done. This operation. We have three zoning distraction investigations that I've been working on. Two members were upgraded without certain approvals or permits. And one of them is complaints from me. And I'm still waiting for the response that they have to be answered.
Any questions for Mariano? See and done, we'll move along. Wade, Glenn's not here yet, so.
Right.
Wade's reports in here, it's pretty thorough.
Yeah, he provided.
Yeah.
Their last agenda.
The Chelsea area construction authority.
Uh, Dan couldn't make it, but wanted to say, uh, Thornton Farms is done. The mark that they're up, the, the last house has happened, so. Uh, and then. Sub overlands. Dexter Chelsea still, of course, coming. That's your town hall, there's another one. But. Everything's okay slowing down a little bit for the winter, but everything's going good.
All right, thank you. Cemetery is stale.
And then I got the email from a resident that was concerned, upset about residents and Thornton Farms coming in and walking their dogs through the Clement Cemetery. And I'm thinking I'm, I'm gonna call the, the manager, head of grounds at Oak Grove. And I talked to him about, because they've had a lot of problems with that. Of people walking and, and not using the cemetery for what it should be used for, just about putting up signs and things like that, so.
Well, they received emails today from some lady who's got a Bradbury that's there.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I saw, yeah, yesterday I wear that.
Yeah, because she's addressed Thornton Farms and they're gonna bring it up at their November meeting.
Yeah.
So let's see what happens.
See what, yeah, they come up with, yeah. That's it.
Alrighty. Chelsea district library Patricia.
I guess the biggest news is just that we are having some changes in our board. The president resigned because he's moved to Grand Rapids, so we're Nigel left someone to be present, president of what they left. He also was her representative for Linden Township, so we know anyone in Linden Township who would like to be on the board. They're still trying to fill that spot. Let's see. And the library did receive an award at the American Library Association annual meeting, which is a big meeting for their exhibit about Jim Abbott and reflections on triumph over adversity. Let's see, Lament Township has seven hundred and seventy one park holders. And I guess I wanted to share the community service. If you have streaming services, you're trying to help people save money by using the streaming services of the library instead. So if you want to download ebooks, cookbooks, magazines, audio books or video, they're hosting something called Bring Your Device Day on November nineteenth, where you'll go, they'll help you set it up and learn how to stream all those things for free onto an iPad or phone or computer. We get to ten AM to twelve PM. I think there's other stuff, I think that's the main things.
Thank you, appreciate it. Bring any information, Annette.
We can do that.
Okay. W W R A.
They had an meeting, but I wasn't there.
Okay. Western Washington Regional Advisory Group, because of the election, they didn't have anything, so. Hereon River Watershed Council. David, would you like to stand up and say a little bit?
Sure. Well, thank you for the opportunity to address the board and focus on the audience. My name's David Lawson. I work for the Hereon River Watering Council. I, the job I have is kind of two parts. First part is I'm the director of government relations for the organization, so I lobby on behalf of the watershed in Lansing and in DC on occasion. The other part of it is I work with Andrea Payne on our staff and we work with Lopa Yunus, the government about rain protection ordinances throughout the watershed itself. So Andrea, her portion of the watershed is Mill Creek and Portage Creek, Creek Sheds. It's through a three nineteen grant from EVO and then I'm funded under some foundation funds. So which means I get to play anywhere else in the watershed, working with local governments. Now, what does that exactly mean? We currently have three green infrastructure programs going on right now. With Lobe Township, we're trying to get that G I M A P adopted as part of their master plan. We're gonna be kicking off a G I workshop in Sio Township next month on December twelfth. And then we just had a workshop, a green infrastructure workshop in Milford Township in Oakland County. And they've actually paused updating their master plan to complete this project and then have it inserted so they can adopt it. And we use a G I plan to figure out what areas should be protected from future development and we get input from the general public basically through workshops I think. And we, we provide all the match, all the support and we learn and listen from residents in each of the communities, what they deem as irreplaceable technical properties and so forth. Additionally, we're working with Puddin Township right now on our fertilizer ordinance, because they have a number of different lakes in their township, so it's gonna you know, control when you can put fertilizer down and how close to the lake or river system you can apply it, because what we're trying to do is prevent phosphorus going into the, into the rivers and the creeks and the streams, which then lead to algae moons in the lakes and eventually all that goes down to Lake Erie where they have a huge algae moon on the western basin, Lake Erie. We're involved in a site project there as well, so. Part of my outreach is visiting in each of the local governments in our watershed where we, we think we have some tools that are disposable, we can help implement and update your zoning ordinances or master plans or have G I M A P whatever in partnership with your, your zoning administrator or if you use a professional planning firm. We can do that. Additionally, this is our sixtieth anniversary as a watershed. We're the oldest one in Michigan. And we have a state of the hereon conference two days from now at Washington Community College on November twelfth from eight AM to four PM. So the last time we did a conference of this scale was ten years ago. So we want, we're providing an update of what the state of the hereon river watershed is. We have a number of speakers coming in. Mixed with our staff who are involved in the science and it's gonna be an exciting day. So if you have a chance to swing by, the tickets are only a hundred dollars for the day. And that includes lunch as well as a reception and snacks for the day. So I've been kind of part of the planning process, bringing in folks, but it's gonna be an amazing event for us and we've got two more days to the event and three more days until it's on, so. This is something we've been working on for, for the past year basically, as we celebrate our sixtieth anniversary as a watershed, so. I appreciate that the opportunity to kind of share what we're doing and, you know, take any questions that the board may have or anybody from the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, CAF, Chelsea area fire authority, yeah, while the millage passed, Ron's not here tonight. I'm gonna reread a little bit from what Pete put in. So this isn't a magic wand kind of thing, it's gonna be the summer tax bill of twenty twenty six. So the hiring would be, would start in September of twenty twenty six. But I saw the amount of people that are looking to get it and now put their paperwork in, there's a lot, so I'm looking forward to that, so. That's it I have from CAF right now. Oh. Uh, the building, the fire department. Um, right now there's another option, they're looking into it and then it'll be coming up at the next meeting, so it's gonna be interesting. Keep you all in suspense. Okay, clerks report.
Yeah, we had an election last Tuesday. Everything went well. We had a pretty good turnout for a local election. The official number was thirty six percent. That's what Washington County was reporting as our climate township turnout. And like, CAF, CAF Millage did pass. The W I S D Millage also passed and then the local marijuana ordinance for poll hunting playoff was sixty eight percent no votes. And I had a new deputy clerk. Cheryl Quinn started a couple of weeks ago and so she's gonna be helping me mainly with election work. Right now she's doing her training and coming up to speed. We did get a new ordinance book with all of the updates in the zoning. I don't know if Mariano has had a chance to look at it once, you know, Mariano or planning officials have had a chance to review it, make sure it's good. I'll load that up on the website. And then the other thing, Kim, our accountant, was in last week helping with some things and she would like to start the budget discussions earlier than we usually do rather than waiting for the last minute, so she's suggesting meeting early December or at least by early January to start planning, finish this one of the budgets.
Cool. The sooner the better, don't you think?
Yeah, then we're rushing at the end of March to get it all.
Okay, supervisor report, um. Boy. Phones have been ringing. Not, not only because of they scraped all the roads and we have, it's supposed to have, be having free bribe. And then all the dust and our skies getting calls. Well evidently the well gets closed in October. So there's, they're, they only bribe him up until Oc- or the end of October, so.
It's not permanent culture.
No, it's closed, it's closing for, yeah, for the winter. So met with those, had people calling out there, called Scott, talked to him about it. Got a meeting with those guys next week, I've had a couple of people call, we got some bridges we need that need dramatic attention. The Guns and Road Bridge will be taking place next year, twenty 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 six. We've got Sager Road Bridge that's gonna need massive construction and that's the next one on the list. Next one is a bridge, yeah. gruesome road between Parker and Steinbach needs attention, that's, so those are the main three ones in the next three years. So tighten our budget, because that's gonna suck up some money there. Had two different companies come out, look, cleaning out that upper upstairs of the depot over here, is that what we're calling it, is the depot now? Okay. Okay.
We made up one, right?
I had one guy come out and they pretty much ran from it. Got a couple of guys come and look at it. Uh, went to Frankham Moose for the conference and that was, boy, that's, I'll tell you, that was very interesting who I met and what people I met with. All the county supervisors all over the, the whole state. Got to hang out with a lot of different good people that I asked a lot of questions with.
Those are really good though, aren't they?
Oh, they are, they're well worth it. There's one, I, and the oldest supervisor in there was, been there for forty five years. And he goes every year.
You're gonna be really old.
Well, the youngest one was twenty four that was there at the meeting.
Forty five years from now, you're gonna be right out.
She will, she was the young lady. But that conference, man, anybody, I don't care what it is, I think it's worth it. We even went on their little steamboat ride. Had a Powell's Sematide. Seems like what's a budget been coming down, a lot of people are backing out, doesn't look like the economy's going as bright as they think it is, so there's grant money available. So that's what we're, that's what I had contacted them on, on grant money. Other than that, that's about it. So we can go right to old business.
The only comment I have, though, on what you mentioned about the bridges, which is just what we've experienced in this last year is even if we have money available and allocate it, if the county doesn't come up with their half, then it gets pushed off just like this last year, so.
The budgets right now too is what, is what everybody's hesitant about.
So it may not be one right after another year after year.
But it's just a matter of what needs to be addressed.
We can have our money available, but if they won't do their share.
Yeah, it's like, you know anybody who's an engineer that doesn't charge three hundred thousand dollars?
Right, that's just way it is.
Okay, go. So we'll go right to old business. Um, which is Ryan Mad Depot. Got questions on that. Number one, right now it's at residential, right? Did you want to bring that up?
Yeah, I mean, well, you gave the update on the status, just so we get it cleaned out, right?
Yeah.
And so then there were two things, just basically what are we gonna do with it next once it is clean? It was being rented as residential, I think in the past it's been either owned and used as commercial or rented as commercial, so. You know, do we want to rent it as residential, do we want to rent it as commercial, do we wanna do something else with it?
I say whoever's willing, if we set a reasonable rent rate.
Yeah, why not, why not put it up, see what we get?
Because from what I understand.
I don't think we can, I don't care.
Because you. As residential, we run it out by bedrooms?
Oh, I have no idea.
And that question, isn't that what we questioned? And then commercial is square footage?
Well, yeah.
The rent, you're just gonna have to figure out which way, how you set that.
Okay.
The cost.
Seems like.
Normally residential is per rooms, commercial is square footage.
Okay, but at the same time of doing this, we want to also look into historical value too, because I, Wayne, your dad brought that up many a times, that historical mark that place has left.
Right.
As a being, so that's something else we need to look at.
I think that's a great idea, because I do think it would be nice to save it.
You can combine it and if we get the right people in there, I think you can, um. Her cost is not gonna be there. I mean, we won't have the investment.
Right, yeah, but, well, I mean, I don't know if we want to get it, I don't know if we're just gonna designate it, it's just
it's a work ethic.
But, or if we think somebody's gonna go in there and do something with it. I think if we get it designated that, there might be potentially, I don't know, these days, but might be some grant money available for upgrades and to take care. But there is a potential downside to that as well, because if you do get it designated as historic, we have to be, we should be very careful, because then you have a lot of limitations on it, things you can't do.
Yeah.
So as long as the township is not thinking of tearing it down or putting aluminum siding on it or some silly thing, then we're probably good. As, as long as we own it, as opposed to a private owner.
Yeah. Well.
But that, that would be my only caution is, yeah, it might open some doors, but it also might shut some things down.
Yeah, that's just that there are regulations and restrictions that they put upon a historical site, everything has to be replaced in that historical value. So it's, it's a number, it's a way of looking at it and it's.
But as far as renting it, I mean, I'm all in favor of renting it, so. And whether we just come up with a, I don't have forgotten what the historical number is we've gotten. But whether it's commercial or residential, it seems like we should come up with what we think is a reasonable, fair market value and just set it. Doesn't matter whether somebody wants to put in a hair salon or.
Oh, you're saying the same place.
Yeah, it's just, it is what it is.
Out there, yeah. You're sitting there and just doing this so good and we, we, we did it before and they, they bit pretty soon, so.
All right.
Do we want to have a real estate agent come in and give us a fair market value and they would know better than we?
I, I can't follow what we're renting.
Well, I'll look into it and then, so. See what the value is and then, uh.
I mean, it's, God, it's limitations, you know, it's not a prime piece of.
So, all right.
But it obviously works, it's been rented as residential for quite a few years, so the right person finds the time.
Yeah, it just seems like we've had some problems with past tenants, so. In my mind, well, I don't know if renting commercial would make it any better or we have better luck, but.
At least.
More contracts are involved.
So are you looking for a motion to authorize you to pursue anything or?
I guess that's what I'm looking at, something to look into what the cost difference, what the regulations are.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the supervisor to seek a reasonable lease or rent amount for the nine mad depot. Coordinate with a local real estate agent, if that's what you feel is beneficial.
Yeah, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, who have needs look into, is that part of the historical thing too?
Let's do that.
I think, I think you just can investigate that and come back.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a big decision.
That might make, that might add a whole different twist to it.
Well, I think that's not gonna be a short term thing, whatever.
Oh, yeah, that would be like forever. So it's on the table right now, have me look into the realtor and getting that building ready for find out the use, the value. I'm a grano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, see and done, motion carried. Now, do you, what do you want to do on the historical part of it, just look into it?
I just.
Yeah, I don't even know where we begin, but.
I have a folder, I, I made some pronouncing some stuff in the internet, just to get some started.
Yeah, I think we probably have to talk to someone at the state, yeah, we could at least start that research for future, especially.
I, I, I don't think that should accrue us from moving ahead.
No, right.
All right, so what do you want to do, just table that, somebody want to make a motion?
Yes.
Right. Motion on the floor to table it.
I don't think we need to.
Okay, next, old, old business township planner. Over the last past years, we had, well, I noticed, and I had my meeting last year, the biggest thing about this was with Carla Warman. What brings it down is it would be in the planner for township in the city and after the fact is when it was brought forward, that place would change. Wouldn't have the same planner for both, after the fact, but so. With me, we conducted interviews. And engineering and, and planner came up, you know, we were very happy with some of them and the one we come up with is, uh. Oh.
Mack and Reagan.
Yeah, back in the. And they came in and met at the. And, um, they came in and met at the, um, met at board um, and some planning commissioners last week at a special meeting. And I think for us to move forward on this. Need to take action.
Yeah, so, that, after that meeting, um, it means they empowered and sent the uh, special services agreement that's in the packet. We're gonna consider that, and their rate structure is in there as well.
Well, based on the ones that, those of you that met with, this was your recommendation, why we had an interview, and met again, I was there. Mariano, you've gotten what you need from, well, I don't know, everything, but mostly what you need from Carolina Warman to this point, right? Assuming they will continue to provide what you need.
So far, they've been pretty good.
They should, they've been our planner for forty-five years.
It will be a matter of how.
Well, I would let them, the two of those firms get together. So, if that's your recommendations, and, and what we met at the meeting, and they've given us, I'd make a motion that we authorize the supervisor to sign the proposal received, uh, date on it, November ten?
No, that's just, that's the meeting, it was received November sixth, it's on the backside.
Okay, November, proposal, November sixth, from Beck and Raider, uh, authorize the supervisor to sign that, and have them become a township planning consultant, send recommendation, and meeting to the, the only administrator and the planning commission.
Okay, is there a second? A second, okay, to move and second, move forward with the hiring of Becker or Raider, and, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seen done, motion carried. You missed the part with your election. Results, oh, your election results? Okay, moving on to new business. Um, township attorney, Anne, if you wanna read that.
Yeah, we received, I think I forwarded it to everyone, we received a letter from Mr. Lillich, he said I found the attorney for, um, and he is intending to retire in a year, and this note, the people who points that Fred Lucas at the firm should be our main, we expect Fred Lucas to be our main contact going forward. Don't know if we, I mean, I think, I don't know Fred, you know, Greg, you know Fred, I think you guys may know Fred. And just wanted to let everybody know that this was happening, I think Vic said he'll still be available on and off to answer questions as needed, but, um, generally Fred will be our main contact, and just wanna make sure that everybody is good with that change.
Just for everybody's information, Fred Lucas has been involved with the township for at least as far back as Thornt Farns, when that happened. Uh, anytime that the township has had meet, the insurance company, township insurer has needed representation, they have always provided us with Fred Lucas, by the way. And we self just with that, and that's where Victor went a couple of years ago, and went as be part of Castleberry and Lucas, so. I have no reservations about Fred being our, as the firm continues as our township firm.
So, is there any action that needs to be followed up on this as more?
Do it, I don't know, I, I tell you, I have. We could just, um, I can move that we accept Victor Lillich's uh, retirement letter with the plan that Fred Lucas would be able to contact us, down to the firm, we will.
Just continue with Castleberry and Lucas.
Right. Okay, so, you second it?
Yeah, continue with Lucas and Castleberry, Castleberry and Lucas.
It's, it's a motion on table to remain with Castleberry and Lucas, um, just switching attorneys, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seen done, motion carried. Alrighty, um. Lima Township, Lima Planning Commission with, uh, Ryman and Silver, Joint Planning Commission Ordinance. Rob sent us out the ordinancees, I don't know what we might, if we wanted to accept it, or we already had the changes all made at the last meeting.
There's just two changes that were highlighted in red here, that were made, um, by someone at Sylvan. And then, they, they're just to clarify, it's on page five of the document, and if we read. That's the only thing from the last time uh, that we had the joint discussion.
Do we need to get this, on the cover page where it says Township of Sylvan, it say Township of Lima?
Yes.
And then, whatever our ordinance number would be?
Uh, we're gonna use the same ordinance number, so.
Really?
Going to start all of the joint ordinances with EDPA, which is the Economic Development Project Area, that's what it was referred to in. Uh, yeah, I talked to Amanda, and we thought it'd be easier if we just have a prefix and then use the same number. So, we have common ordinance number.
But we each have our own ordinance, particular.
Yes. Yes, you're right, it should say Township of Lima, but then the ordinance number would be EDPA twenty-five, or one.
Oh, we've had several meetings on this, and we're really just establishing of it. Besides, here it's. You think it's.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have.
You're our representative, wouldn't say?
No, I, I gave them my little thoughts when we had the first meeting, and, uh, what we got here.
So. I'll make a motion to approve the Sylvan Lima Joint Planning Commission Ordinance Number EDPA dash two-five dash zero-one.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, it's, um, go with the ordinance for Lima Township and Sylvan Township, uh, Planning Commission Ordinance?
It does need to be a real small, although, I understand.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. It's gonna be notes. All opposed, heavens. Dan Lightfoot?
All right.
Mackenzie?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-six, holiday schedule.
Well, Bill, I don't know if anybody, most everybody's probably knows, but this joint Planning Commission, um, we have, we are supposed to appoint two planning commissioners from Lima, and a board member, as well as Sylvan. Anne is and is our board member representative to that, same thing ever refers there. And we have Elizabeth Sensoli and Ron Howdy Shell from the planning.
We don't need a, we don't need an alternative, alternate.
Yeah, this is just the twenty-two-six schedule, and then waiting for December, just about it, and that way down. So, it's our meeting schedule, I assume we're gonna wanna keep our meeting on, like, Monday of the month, and I didn't see any um, which would, our days, except for October twelfth, which is on this day. Which we ended up with, like, this year, we think we've been having any hats on this day, or we can move that one.
We have it on our list, closings, does that cause any problem?
Well, we just went to the office when we opened.
It doesn't matter, as far as getting things ready, not a problem.
Usually still twenty-five minutes, I can probably do that.
Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six meeting dates, and how is the schedule submitted?
Motion on table, anybody want a second? Okay, move and second, to accept the holiday schedule that's been presented, the twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule that's been presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen done, motion carried. Okay, next one is to fill many of, uh, appointees, and.
Yeah, these are all the, um, appointees that end, at the end of this calendar year.
The highlighted.
The highlighted one on the last page in the packet.
Kresha, did you, you wanted to stay on, right? Okay, so we're gonna keep you on today?
Sure, yeah.
Appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
Everybody that does any. One thing I, I do wanna bring up, that I think we should probably just take off, is, uh, for the wave is wave in, I don't know, I can't recall from taking out of the bylaws, but waves, um, basically said they don't want alternates in there to come, and if any alternate comes, it's just for informational, and they wouldn't be voting. Because the thinking is there, probably true of things that have ongoing, it's not like ZBA, where, you know, you have the information right there in front of you, and you know what it is. But wave's thinking, and, and the whole board's thinking is that no, well, you'd be the alternate for that, Bill, if you went to a meeting, you'd be clueless of what's been going on for the last year. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I got no problem with that.
So, just, I mean, we can have an alternate, but wave's not gonna let you do anything.
Yeah. And then saying, for the, for the library, we've never actually listed an alternate, but I don't, I had it on the list, but I don't. Okay, so same situation.
It's just these ongoing agencies, just, they pretty much feel like we're not helping. So, I would propose we take off, sorry, Bill, the alternate and wave, and then the alternate of library, for sure. Nobody gathers.
So, I did, starting at the bottom, I checked Wayne is still interested in being the alternate for the A. So, in that, I assume you wanna stay on the recycling and, uh,
Solid waste?
Solid waste.
Solid waste.
Bill, you're some kind?
I'm the alternate on those two, and I don't think I've ever, I've gone to one recycled even in the last.
Yeah, shucks.
Communicate with me.
You live on the same damn road.
We need an exception.
Planning Commission, so Elizabeth and Madeline's terms are up, they're both interested in continuing. We just talked about the library, fire. Bill, we just put on that, I assume we want to continue?
Yeah.
And then the last one is CAG, um, do we need a board member as a reference? Or should we have a board member?
From what I understand, it should be a board member.
I think we're probably the only one that doesn't have a board member. I know four and five years ago, I was still on there as a non-board member, I was only one, what, nine? Except for the city sometimes, wanted full-time staff, or something. But I don't know, you sound, you know him, the city reference? But other than that, there. There's always been a board member on there.
So, we're gonna have the nomination for a board member to be on Chelsea area construction. So.
Well, are we keeping an alternate on construction and fire authority, Jennifer Dale?
Did you ask Jennifer?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you good?
Yeah.
Well, ours is a construction agency, has been for a long time. Well.
I mean, I can do it.
You do it?
I can do it.
There.
I think it's during the day, right?
Yeah, it's like ten o'clock or something like that.
Yeah, cause they want staff there.
Right.
Their staff.
Yeah, all right, cool, 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 cool.
But I can't see a question in that, there, for the bylaws, it's only quarterly. Um, but when I was on it, I continually pushed for at least a setting, a monthly meeting, because it just needed that, my supervision, and sort of not supervision oversight, you know, supervising oversight. And when I started, it was when they didn't have the money, and they thought they were going belly up. So, I think they've gotten away from that a little bit. I think they need more than quarterly, but I was very much in favor of establishing a monthly meeting date. It's easier to catch one at seven, than in the public. I mean, they may, do you even know, were they going monthly for a while, or just as any?
I'm trying to remember, um, I don't, I don't think so.
I think it was kinda hit or miss, they have the.
Yeah.
I know, I know they met sometimes in.
Right.
Sure. I don't know, just a regular thing, or.
All right, so do we have any more appointees, all the appointees are filled in, so. Move to final public comment.
Well, are we gonna do any action on these, or are we just talking about?
Oh, okay.
Do it now.
Okay. So, do we have to vote on every one, or just go?
Well, I think we have.
Are you, are you like?
Probably smart, just listen. Just say. So, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Wayne Lambard. Reappoint Wayne Lambars as the alternate to ZBA. Reappoint Nanette Havens as the Western Washington Recycling Authority with Greg McKenzie's alternate. Reappoint Nanette Havens to the Washington County Solid Waste. Stop. Management Representative Greg McKenzie alternate. Make a motion that we delete Bill Van Riper as alternate to Wade. No wave, no alternate is required. Make a mo, and continue with appointing, reappointing Bill Van Riper. As representative to Semcog, Greg McKenzie the alternate. Reappoint Patricia Garcia to, whoop, did I miss? Sorry. Uh, reappoint Marlene Consiglio and Elizabeth Sinsoli to the Township Planning Commission. And reappoint Patricia Garcia to the Chelsea Library Board and the. Alternate. Dafa, is that yellow too?
Yes.
Reappoint uh, Phil Van Riper as the representative to Dafa and Jennifer Evans as alternate. And appoint Ann Kloski as the. Representative to Chelsea Construction Agency and Dale Lloyd as the alternate for terms.
I'll accept a second.
So, is this time for discussion?
Yeah, well.
Mark second and discuss.
We'll get a second. Alright, so, any discussion?
So this is taking my dad, Wayne, this is taking him off of the. Board of the Gray Department?
That they need a board, they, they want a board, uh, a board member on the board. Found that out today.
Is it Matt told you?
No, that's what we looked up, that, that's what it's been back with board members, um, for every township in the city and. That's why he was on it before, he was a board member. More discussion.
So everybody from the other townships are board members?
Yeah, yeah. What is her, is it Amanda?
Supervisor, I don't know, is she still on it?
Who's that?
Lyndon, Lyndon.
Oh, Pam?
Pam, she was, last I knew. Is she still, you know, do you have, you been to any of these?
It might be a festival.
Yeah, cuz she stepped down from a lot of boards.
And they might have uh.
Is it the same with Dexter Township, what that, I'm gonna.
Probably good idea, it's probably, it's, it's probably as important of a representative Anton as we have.
Yeah. Alright, any more discussion? See and none, we'll move on to the vote. All favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, see and none, motion carried. And now we're down to public, final public comments. See and none, okay. I will take a motion to adjourn. Move the second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, see and none, see and adjourn.
And I just wanna know why it turned into twenty degrees all of a sudden.